Okay, I'd like to call the October 2nd, 2015 meeting of the Board of Education to order. First item, implication, Ms. Hethridge?
Hello, I hope everyone's doing well. Just to read a little story. I know you all think I'm hung up on the beach, but I guess that's my place that I go and reflect on life in general. And so I just wanted to read you this short story. The beach is not the place to work, to read, write, or think. I should have remembered that from other years. Too warm, too damp, too soft for any real mental discipline or sharp flights of spirit. One never learns. Hopefully, one carries down the faded straw bag, lumpy with books, clean paper, long overdue, unanswered letters, freshly sharpened pencils, list, and good intentions. The books remain unread, the pencils break their points, and the pads rest smooth and blemished as the cloudless sky. No reading, no writing, no thoughts even, at least not at first. At first, the tired body takes over completely, as on shipboard, one descends into a deck chair apathy. One is forced against one's mind, against all tidy resolutions, back into the permeable rhythms of the seashore. Rollers on the beach, wind in the pines, the slow flapping of herons across sand dunes drown out the hectic rhythms of city and suburb. Timetables and schedules, one falls under their spell, relaxes, stretches out prone. One becomes, in fact, like the element on which one lies, flattened by the sea, bare, open, empty as the beach, erased by today's tides of all yesterday's scribblings. And then, some morning in the second week, the mind wakes, comes to life again, not in a city sense, no, but beachwise. It begins to drift, to play, to turn over in gentle careless roles, like those lazy waves on the beach. One never knows what chance treasures these easy unconscious rollers may toss up. On the smooth white sand of the conscious mind, what perfectly rounded stone, what rare shell from the ocean floor. But it must not be sought for, or heaven forbid dug for. No, no dredging of the sea bottom here. That would defeat one's purpose. The sea does not reward those who are too anxious, too greedy, or too impatient. To dig for treasure shows not only impatience and greed, but lack of faith. Patience, 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 is what the sea teaches us. Patience and faith. One should lie empty, open, choiceless as a beach, waiting for a gift from the sea. Thank you.
Maybe I ought to go to the beach more often and learn some patience. [laughing] Okay, next, I'd like to introduce our new superintendent. This is his first meeting, Mr. Mark Stefanik. [applause] And since he doesn't have any items on the agenda today, I'll let him lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So would you all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, earlier, we had a work session, and we covered three topics. One was the 2015-16 student enrollment. The next topic was the 2015-16 budget update, because the state finally has a budget. And the last item was bus safety and stop-arm procedures. And two of those items, the student enrollment and budget update, you will hear a little bit about in the body of the meeting today. Okay, next, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Send me a second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Agenda approved. Next item, student board member reports. Well, the experience will start with Katie.
Hi. Um, hello, everyone. This is weird doing a board meeting in here. Doesn't feel right. Um, I'm going to be talking about Jarvisburg Elementary, my favorite, JP Knapp, and Moyac Middle School for their events for the month of October. Jarvisburg Elementary has been working hard this month. Recently, the news crew interviewed Mr. Stefanik, did I say it right? Okay. Um, our new superintendent, and posed some very interesting questions. This will be aired on their morning news. Did you know that? Okay, just wanted to say. Coming up for the month of October is their Fall Book Fair, which begins October 7th and runs through October 15th. They'll also be having an Egyptian Animal Assembly, sponsored by Jags, and the local fire department will be coming out on October 5th for fire safety for JP Knapp. They will be recognized on Tuesday, October 6th, and rallied by State Superintendent June Atkinson for achieving a 100 percent cohort graduation rate. Spartan Spirit Week will begin October 5th through 8th. The first quarter will end on October 8th for the Early College. All JP Knapp sophomores will be job shadowing on Friday, October 9th. There will be no COA classes on Monday and Tuesday, October 12th and 13th, which I am very excited about. There will be a senior meeting at JP Knapp on Tuesday, October 13th. All juniors will take the PSAT on Wednesday, October 14th. And there will be a SAD Bonfire, the Students Against Destructive Decisions Club, on Friday, October 16th, with Red Ribbon Week beginning the following week on Tuesday, October 20th. And for Moyac Middle School, they will begin to celebrate Red Ribbon Week as well on October 26th through 30th. They will have their first chorus concert of the year on October the 9th. And they'll have the football games on the 7th and 21st. Soccer and volleyball play at home on the 13th and 29th. And they say to come and support their student athletes. And they don't have this in there, but probably to support their chorus, too, because I know that their shows are always very well. Oh, I'll pass it on, please.
Okay, and Sidney Christian is our new junior board member from Currituck High School, and she has a report of both, I guess, Mary Kate and her.
Yes. I will be talking about Currituck Middle, Currituck High, Griggs Elementary, and Knott's Island Elementary. For Currituck County Middle School, we will be taking all of the eighth grade girls to a celebration for women in mathematics at Elizabeth City State University on October 8th. They will be participating in math competitions, cheer competitions, and essay contests, along with attending workshops sponsored by NASA. The eighth grade recognition for fall athletes will be on October 28th at halftime of the football game. The fall sports pictures will be October 9th. The band will be having their fruit sale beginning October 7th. The cheerleaders will be having a kiddie camp for K through five students on Saturday, October 24th. The campers will cheer with the middle school cheerleaders at the game on October 28th. For Currituck County High School, we have a big shout-out to the Currituck High FFA for hosting the Northeast Regional Leadership Conference on September 17th. Over 300 FFA students represented the 19 districts at the conference. Everyone was so complimentary of our advisors, Missy Swain and Daniels Meads, as well as our facilities. Congratulations to the athletic director, Robert Woodley, on receiving the Charlie Adams Distinguished Service Award for Region 1 at the Regional Athletic Directors Conference at East Carolina University. Congratulations to newest inductees to the Currituck High Beta Club. We're very proud to recognize the 35 new inductees. We are also currently registering juniors and sophomores for the PSAT. The deadline is next week. The guidance department will be sponsoring a Senior Parent Night on October 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. In addition, there will be a College Day event on October 19th at 8:30 a.m. for upperclassmen, where representatives from community colleges and four-year universities will be available to discuss options for post-secondary education with students. Lastly, homecoming will be held on October 23rd versus Bertie County. Spirit Week events will take place October 29th to 23rd, or 19th to 23rd, excuse me, and will include a Powder Puff game on October 20th. We hope you will join us. And for Griggs, they will be participating in a Fire Prevention Assembly on Monday, October 5th. Our book fair will be held October 13th to 16th, with a family reading night on Thursday, October 15th from 5:00 to 7:00. Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated among students and staff for the week of October 19th to 23rd. Their PBIS recognition day for the first nine weeks is planned for October 30th, along with the kickoff to our first oboes of the year. Griggs students and Yaffle staff will be reading the Tale of Despero. And lastly, for Knott's Island Elementary, their book fair is scheduled for October 19th through 23rd with a book and movie night from, on October 21st, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. The Fall Festival will be held on October 30th from 5:00 to 7:00 in the gym.
Great, thank you, Sidney. Next will be our new junior representative from JP Knapp Early College, Jacob Walton.
All right, so I'll be discussing Shellborough Central and Moyac Elementary Schools. So for Shellborough Elementary, the Mustangs have been a busy herd this month. All parents and students are invited to the Educational Resource Fair on October 6th. Firefighters will be visiting on October 9th as part of Fire Prevention Week. The annual Penny Awards for Kids Walk Through Cancer will take place in early October, and the Shellborough Elementary School's PTA will host the Fall Festival on October 16th. There's also several events planned during Red Ribbon Week on October 26th to October 30th. For Central Elementary School, the Eagle Leaders have had a very busy month. Students are still very excited about earning Eagle Leader tickets, and teachers are continuing to review and reteach PBIS matrices and their expectations. The Fall Scholastic Book Fair was well-received and closed last week. Moving forward, there are a lot of notable events to announce. First, the make-up date for Fall Pictures is October 6th. Our first Leader of Character Assembly is on October 22nd at 9:30, and our Fall Parties and celebratory events will be held in the morning on October 30th, 2015. More information about the latter will be sent home closer to the date. Teachers have been very busy with their benchmark assessments and are starting to look at data to make decisions for meeting the needs of all their students. Please check out our school website to find out about these and many other events posted in the calendar section. And lastly, for Moyac Elementary, it's been quite an action-packed month for the Panthers. During this month, the firefighters will be joining them in the gym classes as part of Fire Prevention Week. They'll also be participating in a Penny War, October 13th to October 16th, in support of the Kids Walk for Kids Who Have Cancer. There's also a lot of great events planned during Red Ribbon Week to encourage the young Panthers to make healthy choices. We have our Costume Family Reading Night on October 15th, where they'll dress like our favorite four characters and read aloud some books that include those characters. On October 29th, the kindergarteners will be participating in the Second Annual Letter Land Day, where they will dress in costumes, participate in some literacy stations, and have a parade to celebrate how much they are learning about letters and sounds. Finally, the PTA will host the Fall Festival on October 23rd.
Great. Thank you, Jacob, and Katie, and Sidney. Okay, next item on the agenda is the 2015-16 student enrollment update. Ms. Kinzel, the Assistant Superintendent?
Is this already on?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Oh, good afternoon, members of the board. Each month, we've been providing you with updates about our enrollment and how it's been progressing since, well, June. And this evening, we'd like to provide a more formal presentation for you based on our enrollment numbers on the first month report, and be able to share that information as well with the public. This first slide here is our first month's Principal's Monthly Report. It's a PMR. The district and state collects monthly enrollment information by school and by grade level, and it is submitted through a report through Power School that helps to generate and create the ADM, or the Average Daily Membership Numbers, that are used to calculate funding. So this is our first month's report, again, by school and by grade level, and of course, taking a high-level view of it, looking down at our overall enrollment as of the first month of school, it's 4,021. By itself, it's not that stunning or marvelous information, but when we start using it to compare, how are our numbers compared to where we were last year? And so this next slide illustrates a comparison of this year's enrollment numbers to last year's, same time, first month's report, and being able to do some figures in terms of how much change are we seeing at the individual school level. So this particular chart does that kind of a comparison, the first month report this year to last year. And you'll see in the green slides, or the green shaded parts of this slide, areas where we're seeing some significant change, increases in enrollment by school. So looking at this slide, Central Elementary School has a nice little bump there of over 6% compared to last year's first month's report. The high school, Currituck County High School, has an equally 6% or more increase there. Currituck Middle School, also 5% increase over last year's first month. And Jarvisburg Elementary School, a whopping 9.5% over last year. Having this kind of information to help us try to project enrollment in the future, where are we anticipating growth, and how are our schools set to handle the capacity that might be needed if continued growth goes at the same rate? So it's good to always look back and compare where we are from this point, because we have seats for everybody right now, yay, and being able to then measure where do we need to go in the future. I pointed out some of the areas of growth on this chart, but also you can see that there are also details that show where we have some decline in the enrollment. And again, this kind of looks, it comes out very clearly whenever I pull up the next slide, and we're going to compare multiple years. When looking over the last five years by school and comparing, again, to where we are here, first month and 2015-16 school year compared to the first month in previous years, we can see, you know, how are we comparing from this year to previous years? This is color-coded to show green, meaning there's been growth, and red to be able to show that there's been a decline. If there's no color in it, obviously, there was no change, no growth, no decline. What I take away from this particular chart, especially with the color coding, is that there are some patterns of growth that move across all five years in several of our schools, as well as some pretty steady decline in our enrollment in some schools over the period of five years. So, for example, you can take a look at Jarvisburg Elementary School has seen increased growth over the period of the last five years, again, leading up to that 9.5% growth at Jarvisburg Elementary School. At Shellborough Elementary School, you can see we've seen a continued growth, pretty significant over time, where we've got a trajectory where we can actually predict that, hey, we're going to continue to see some growth there. When we look at the high schools' numbers, you can see that the pattern of growth is consistent there, but it's not necessarily incremental or continuing to show that gradual growth. It's rather, you know, I don't know, it's just, it's all over the place. One year, it's a significant growth, and then it's just a small growth measure. So that's going to be something we'll have to watch as far as how it goes over the next reporting period and over the next several years. I think it's significant to note, not only to the board, but to the public, that what we're seeing based on this type of a pattern is that we're seeing some significant growth in the southern part of our county. And Jarvisburg feeds into Currituck County Middle School, Central feeds into Currituck County Middle School, and those are two schools that have had some pretty significant growth lately. And so we're seeing growth continue at the middle school that we can project that will end up at the high school. So that's important for us to know. Again, looking at the district totals overall, you'll see that across the board, for the last five years, we have, on our first month's report, we've seen some pretty significant growth. So it ranges from, you know, a low 2%, barely 2%, to where we are right now, or, I'm sorry, two years ago, when we were at almost 5% growth at the first month reporting. And today, this year's report, we're looking at, no, that was last year's, we have a difference of about 3.5% compared to last year.
Sandy, can you explain, like you did in the...
Go back.
Sorry.
No, that's quite all right.
Just for about Knott's Island, the reason we saw a significant decrease, just so people...
Absolutely.
Don't make me repeat, "Knott's Island."
No. I appreciate you pointing that out. I appreciate you pointing that out.
Even on the rain right now, we may not know.
Yes, they're floating away. Yes, and I'm sorry for not pointing that out. I was fixated on the growth. Yes, you'll notice that Knott's Island has a pretty significant pattern of decline over time. And there are some influences that we've inflicted to create some of that. Several years ago, we moved a large population of our sixth graders that year. In fact, we took sixth grade and the rising sixth graders. So we took two classes of students, we moved them to the middle school. And so that obviously created a large decrease, almost 35% of the school's population went that year, and that's the result of that. Also, because it's a small school, and the population varies so much, I mean, percentages are percentages, so when you're, you know, one student can make a pretty big impact on a percentage. And with smaller class sizes, again, once a larger group moves out, you know, 20 kids goes out and only 14 come in, it's going to show a negative, a pretty significant negative on that. So again, that, the significant decline was really because we moved a large body of students out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to make sure when people saw it, they...
No, I appreciate you reminding me to bring that out. Well, on that same note, and I'm glad, because anomalies happen, and sometimes we're the culprits, you'll see JP Knapp Early College on this slide has a pretty significant increase. Well, that's because as they were, as they were opened, they opened with a freshman class only. And then the next year, we added another freshman class, and now we had two class of kids in the school. And so as they grew out, obviously, their overall population grew, so that's going to be reflected in their numbers as well. So, thanks for pointing that out. Okay? Okay, so why is this significant? Why is it important to us to watch for this? Because, again, as I said earlier, the Principal's Monthly Reports are pulled together and generate our ADM. That ADM is what is used to help us determine funding from the state. That's the number that we receive funding on. So when we look at our DPI ADM allotment from last year, and we compare it to where we are at the first month of this year's PMR report, there are policies in place through the allotment policy manuals that allow for adjustments in our funding based on growth compared to the ADM allotment. So when we look at that, the regulations are, we have to have at least a 2% increase or 100 students in order to be eligible to request additional funding from DPI. So what this chart shows is where we are in relation to how we were funded, and again, you can see here that we're just barely under the 2% requirement. When we pull out our 13th, our super seniors from JP Knapp, and I'm painting a worst-case scenario for us right now, we are seeking clarification on how they fall, if they're considered seniors, even though it's their super senior, additional senior year. And if those numbers fall back into play, then we will meet the 2%, and we will be able to request additional funding, which we plan to do.
And that funding, 2% is approximately $400,000?
That's what our finance officer tells me, that it could very well be that much.
We might either gain $400,000 or get nothing for the additional students.
Nothing. And it's important to know that we've worked hard within the budget that the board has established, and within last year's budget and the continuing resolution, we have already had to add additional positions to be able to absorb some of this growth that you're seeing. So the $400,000 extra would help us to recoup some of the money that we're already fronting for positions, and then, of course, with other additional expenses to be able to open up new classrooms that we've had to do. But I'd like to be able to say that we'd be able to use this additional funding to further reduce class sizes.
Great.
Okay. Just finally, you know, what's next beyond the first month's report, we're going to continue monitoring. Again, the second month, the second month's report is very significant in terms of it being a part of that formula for determining our average daily membership. As of today, our enrollment count is 4012, and that includes the 13 JP Knapp super seniors. And that number does, like I said, put us within the 2% overage, and we could apply for that. If, worst-case scenario, we pull them out, then we fall, again, just below, and we'd be at like 1.7%. And again, we'll watch and monitor those numbers carefully. At the second month's report, we are held to individual class-size standards that are set by the state, and we will be monitoring that closely as well, because we do have a couple of class sizes while we meet the LEA average, that we are over the state individual max, and plans are underway if they maintain through the second month that we will be probably reorganizing classrooms as best we can, if we're able to. And so that's also a consideration.
Okay, thank you. And I guess the last comment would be, we may still lose a few students because the state just finalized their budget, and we have a few that may take advantage of the opportunity scholarships. So that will come into play. Thank you, Ms. Kinzel.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item, 2015-16 budget highlights. Lori Trussell, Finance Officer.
A few of the highlights this year. Teachers and instructional support received experience steps, and those that moved to steps 5, 10, 15, 20, or 25 received salary increases. Other teachers that were zero to four years on the experience scale received an increase, too. They received that increase in August. Other raises will be done in October. Assistant principals and principals received their steps or an $809 bonus if they do not receive a step increase. All school system employees, even those receiving raises and step increases, employed on November 1st will receive a $750 bonus to be paid in December, and that amount is not subject to retirement, and it's prorated for permanent part-time employees. Drivers Ed funding is fully funded for 1516 and 1617 fiscal years. The teacher-assistant funding remained, except for the nonrecurring funds, which was about 5% or 6%. No COLA raises for retirees.
Before you go on, Lori, that's the equivalent of about one teacher assistant, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
About one teacher assistant. Rehired retirees are eligible to retain health insurance. Fully funds student growth, the budget did in fiscal year 1516 and 1617. Textbook funded was increased about 40%, and it now includes digital resources. The budget expanded Read to Achieve Camps to first and second graders instead of just third graders. Hospitalization and retirement had small increases, and transportation was down 5% due to fuel cost decreases. Any questions?
Okay, are there any other questions? Because we did receive a report, a more detailed report earlier on this. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Trussell. Okay, next item, Trillium Services. Doug Toll, Director of Exceptional Children's Services.
Thank you. Superintendent Stefanik, board members, it's my pleasure to talk to you all about, I think, an initiative that we started talking about, I guess it was about six months ago. I had the opportunity to talk with Dr. Sam Shepard, who was the Exceptional Children's Director in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. And when we were having this conversation, we were experiencing, I think, a lot of kind of behavioral challenges within our schools, some difficulties. So we're looking at some ways to address some of those concerns. I brought some of the ideas back, and we essentially formed a collaborative group and started that process. I do have two folks up here with me. This is Dana Parker. She's our behavior liaison, and Dana, there you go. She's supported through PRC 29 Grant, which is, it's the old Willie M. definition, and Willie M. went away, but it's PRC 29 now, so it's grant-funded. Athena Chastain could not be here, so Ms. Arrington's here in case you'll have any questions. Dana represents the behavior component, Virginia would represent the mental health component. Is that, all right, no, okay, all right. We got together and we talked and wanted to make this, obviously, a community group, a collaborative group. So we initiated conversations with Trillium Health, which was formerly ECBH, and they've merged into Trillium now, the Currituck County DSS and the public schools. And essentially, it said, here's what we recognize as a school system, that schools are where we have the majority, you know, of our needs in the community with... are where we have the majority of, you know, of our needs in the, in the community with all of our students being based at specific areas. So that's where mental health needs are often discovered through our currently RTI, MTSS process, and where the most supports are usually needed. We also know that students who experience these mental health problems often struggle in many facets of school, academically, socially, behaviorally, will experience problems in the school, experience problems in the community. Schools are recognized as places where students can receive mental health services. So there's a lot of models already in schools currently where mental health services are provided in the schools. Wake County, Asheville County, some of the smaller counties as well. Students who have needs, who have more needs on the mental health continuum are at higher risk for dropping out. In fact, there was a study that stated that students with emotional disturbances dropped out at a rate of fifty percent compared to an overall national rate of ten percent. Students who need more support on the mental health continuum are referred out of schools here in Kirtuck County, and they travel to Virginia, Pasquotank, Elizabeth City, or Dare County. Kirtuck County has very little resources when it comes to meeting the mental health needs of our students. We also recognize that the ratio of counselors, social workers, school psychologists are below the recommended levels. The folks we have work very hard and very diligently to meet the needs of our students, but through no fault of the school system, the funding levels are not what they should be to meet the recommended levels of staffing. Also that the mental health needs of our students is an area needed of improvement. We support our students, families, community, and the schools themselves. And I guarantee you can ask any of the administrators in the rooms if that would be an added bonus to them, and they would all say yes. So we presented this information to them. This is some of the information that we shared with them. So I know we just said our numbers were at forty-one, or forty-one hundred. When we did this survey, we had thirty-nine hundred students in the schools at the time. Oh, excuse me, I'm a little ahead of myself. We had thirty-nine hundred students when we did this. We have two full-time school psychologists. The APA actually recommends one school psychologist for every thousand students, three school social workers, ten counselors, a behavior liaison, and then Ms. Parker works with a behavior coach as well.
Okay, before you go to the next one, you said we have two school psychologists.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is most of their time still taken up testing and identifying students with different issues and rather than counseling?
Good question. Right. So their new evaluation is actually geared more towards student learning. It reflects what standards teachers are being evaluated on. They do have the responsibility of administering cognitive tests, behavioral assessments, so they still do all that. The standard, though, now is for them to also serve on RTI teams, MTSS teams, work with student learning, behavioral support if there's crisis as well. So they're really stretched thin in what they're doing. So in the spring of two thousand fifteen, our group comprised of myself, Ms. Arrington, Ms. Parker, Ms. Chastain, they went and, school to school, and asked all the counselors, what students do you think would have types of needs that we currently don't have supports for? They identified thirteen percent of our student population as having, being candidates for mental health or behavioral services that we couldn't currently meet at our existing level. Now, our counselors currently work with students, their behavior, mental health, they work with students as well, but this is outside of that. So we think of things in tiers, and we're talking about the very top tier of our students. So that's about five hundred students that we need access to. We pulled some information down here. So last school year, we had six hundred ninety-nine behavior referrals, eight hundred forty days out of school, and seven hundred forty days of in-school suspension. And so I just did some rough math. That was about four and a half, if you looked at one student, eight hundred forty days was about four and a half years of the school that a student would miss if that was one student. So you can see that mental health and behavioral support is essential in helping our schools meet the needs of some of our most challenging students. This is what is currently available in Kirtuck County. We utilize Mobile Crisis. They're part of Integrated Family Services. Last year, Integrated Family Services worked with twenty-seven families. There's Kids First, which provides services one day a week. There's two private providers in Kirtuck County. One doesn't accept Medicaid, and the other one is only one day a week. So here's what, after we presented our information, this was our goal. We wanted to increase, obviously, mental health and behavioral support, the direct services for all students, staff, and community members. And we had a very lofty goal, and we're going to stick to that, and this is ultimately what we want. We also would like to have seamless mental health services in the schools, recognizing that if parents don't have to check students out of school, they're going to stay in school and not miss as much school. And then build the capacity of all employees to address mental health needs, because we know that the students are in the schools, our teachers, and our support staff are the ones that run into the mental health issues first. And if we can build their capacity, then that helps with increasing student achievement, decreasing some of the issues that we're having. This is the continuum of services that we talk about. We worked very hard in working with Ms. Parker and Ms. Chastain in trying to coordinate the differences between what a behavior and what a mental health concern is. We'll not go through all of this, but it just talks about levels of support. We're talking about counseling that gets up here when we've gone through this continuum of services and trying to provide support to students. So, again, just going through the process. After we presented our information, Trillium agreed that there was sufficient need to establish a relationship with a recognized mental health provider. Integrated Family Services was the recommended provider. It worked out perfectly because we already had a relationship with them. And here's the agreement that we talked about with them. They're going to provide school-based therapy to Kirtuck County High School, the two middle schools, Kirtuck Middle, Moyuck Middle, Moyack Elementary, and Charboro Elementary, to start off with. Those schools were chosen because they had the highest referral rate and largest population of students that receive services from Mobile Crisis or Integrated Family Services. So they can serve children who are recipients of Medicaid, who have behavioral and emotional problems that hinder the learning environment, mental health, and our substance abuse diagnosis, and the parents have to consent to these services as well. This is a no-cost service because they will be billing Medicaid, and if the students have no insurance, they'll be billing a third party for that. So this is a no-cost service to us. The one agreement that we, Integrated Family Services asked is that they had office space, access to our Wi-Fi, and then a meeting space for them and the students. This is a big part right here, within one year. It's a licensing issue right now. The lady that we have, Janice Culpepper, currently is lacking a certification to bill third-party. So within a year, they anticipate having that ability to bill third-party such as...
Why, she can do that.
That was one addition.
She can't do tri-care.
Tri-care, right. So with the addition of this certification, after a year, she would be able to bill those third-parties, which would be big. In addition to that, she would also be able to perhaps see students outside. We initially talked about possibly setting up space outside and having an office after hours as well. The school-based model, again, this is more about the process that we take. We've designated school administrators and counselors as essentially the gatekeepers to the referral system. So they would make the referrals to Integrated Family Services. Integrated Family Services would do the assessment. Typically, they'll do the assessment at home. If they need to, they'll do it at school. They will then contact the counselor to determine the level of service, and then they'll contact the parents to get consent for services. Their base services would be once every two weeks, and then if needs extenduate, they would either increase or decrease that. We will get two reports. One will come to the central office telling us how many referrals that we have and how many students are receiving services. The building-level principal will get an individualized report as well. And again, here's the schools that are receiving services. This process started this past week with Ms. Culpepper going into the schools, meeting school staff, working out the logistics, looking at office space, things of that nature. We sent out a PowerPoint to the principals, asking them to, you know, let their staff know what's going to be happening. They've already, Integrated Family Services has already met with the schools that are involved, their counselors and administrators, and have already presented this information to us. She, I believe, already has one referral. Our school has already done one referral, but anticipates starting services, trying to start services and assessments next week. And that's essentially where we're at at this point. If I flew through that, I'm sorry.
Questions?
You were talking about them getting the ability to bill third-party insurance companies. That is something on their part that they're doing. That's not anything that's holding up. That's...
That's correct. That's a licensed requirement for her to be able to bill, you know, different parties besides Medicaid, correct?
Okay.
I think currently she's an LCSW. Is that correct? I think so.
Okay.
Okay, I know students with emotional, psychological problems very often are disruptive in the regular classroom. How do you balance them receiving service with the kids in the classroom who have a right to an education without disruption?
Well, that's really what we're trying to do, because that's what my job is, is behavior support. Administrators will contact me, and administrators will contact me when there's a student who's very disruptive. So what I typically do is maybe just do a quick observation of the classroom, making sure it's not classroom management or something with a teacher issue. And then we look at what is just behavior. If we change certain things, then behavior should change. You know, if we make sure that teachers have quality instruction, if we make sure that we're giving clear choice to a kid and clear consequence, then we should have a change in behavior if we're doing all those things. And what has happened, like when I started in December, what we were finding is with some students, that wasn't enough. And that's when we knew we needed help, because we only have one mental health therapist. And when we're talking about four hundred kids that people identify as needing services above and beyond, then obviously, one person couldn't provide that. So we know these children have needs, and we need to get them help so they don't disrupt their regular room. And that's really where it all began. The teachers and administrators calling out, saying we need help. We have children that we know that have issues that they need to, you know, be able to deal with, that we can work with, so they can be successful in the classroom.
Okay.
Is this an outside company coming in to do this?
It is.
Are we legally bound in any way, any decision they make, that we don't want to?
Well, we signed a memorandum of agreement with them, but essentially, we have to get parent consent to allow them to work with the student. And then they're allowing Integrated Family Services to provide those counseling services, which would be recommended outside of the school, inside the school.
Mr. Simmons, I will say that as part of this process, we've sent consent information, their memorandum of agreement, and a request for guidance on whether we need additional consent forms or anything that would cover us through any kind of liability by offering this service through the school. So other districts have done this. Some have opted to have an additional consent form with Kirtuck schools on it or whatever their district to cover them, in addition to what Trillium has put out there. So it's, we're still getting that information back. And before they see the first student, we will have something for them.
So you're saying that we've contacted our lawyer, and he's seen all of the...
Yes.
Basically, these are students who we would have encouraged their parents to see a counselor anyway, and what we're doing is just allowing this to take place in school so that we know it's getting done.
We're bringing the counselor.
We're bringing the counselor to them because for so many of our families, it's very difficult to go back to Virginia to find someone. I mean, you saw what Ms. Trussell says, there's no one in Kirtuck County. Someone's one day a week. There's no one for Medicaid. And then we have a large population of students who are uninsured, completely uninsured, and we have nowhere to send them.
My question was, liability-wise, our attorneys have approved, I mean, the counselors, since they're not employed by Kirtuck County Schools, this is an outside firm coming in to counsel our kids.
And they have background checks, and they...
Yeah, that's all been done. But again, we'd be hoping to see if there needs to be another layer of protection for the school just through a consent form.
So we're waiting on the...
That's correct.
I have background with contracts like this, and what they do is they provide the services they can provide at school, and then if they, there's a recommendation for more services outside of school, then that's just an agreement between the family and...
But we're not bound as a school system. If they call for extra, you know, counseling or something, we're not bound as a school system to give.
No, no. They would have to agree to that, and it would be the family third across to that.
And if I have the continuum services, a therapy to a student, once a month, there's students who need a family health support.
And I'll say this, this is Trillium Health Resources, which is part of Mobile Crisis, whom we already allow into the schools as well. So, you know, Mobile Crisis already comes into our schools and works with our students. It is a different, I guess...
More...
Correct, thank you.
And then Integrated Family Services has an office in the city, yes.
Right. And just first, a comparison, Dare County, I believe, currently, in the last time I talked to them, had four counselors through this type of model, and also provided behavioral support in their classrooms. That is our goal, is to build capacity, but first, they need to see the referrals from the students that come in. And so our goals right now are to try to reach as many students as possible.
And Ms. Parker mentioned a number, I think, that I saw in a report that you gave me at one time, that we have, what is it, four hundred and twenty students that have some type of an identified exceptionality?
It's gone up to, I was just talking to Ms. Trussell about this, about four hundred and fifty-four students right now.
Four fifty-four.
We're about twelve point one percent.
Yeah, is that a large amount for a district our size, which, is that average?
The federal government caps you at twelve point five percent, and they say if you're over twelve point five percent, you're over-identifying. So when I got here, we were probably about eight or nine percent. We've risen to about twelve, right about twelve percent. With that, we did see an increase in funding to, I think, Ms. Trussell was telling me, about two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars for state funding with the increase in identification. But we've changed some of our processes as well to try to meet the needs of our students.
Is that four twenty? Oh, go ahead.
It's not all about identification. We have gotten a lot of...
And this is correct.
Explain it overall, right? How do you...
If your, your rate of students in the Exceptional Children program is greater than twelve point five percent, okay.
How's the over-identifying taking place?
It's done by repeating, they have to make a decision whether or not there's a need for services of exceptional children.
Right, I understand that. What I'm saying is, if you're at that twelve point five threshold, and you say, okay, we over-identify, if it's a test that's the same across the board, what do you change to make that...
So we've looked at the processes that we've implemented, and a lot of times, the discretion comes down to an IAP team, which is referred either through a parent referral or through the RTI team. And so the IAP team has to look at fourteen disabling conditions, and it's a three-pronged test. And so the first is they have to meet, have a disability, they have to require specially-designed instruction, and I just went on the third one.
Is it a two-pronged?
Well, so, but the IAP team has to answer the three questions. And so, you know, there's a lot of different areas. Our highest area is learning disabilities. Half of our students have a learning disability, and so we use a...
Half of the identified students.
That's right, that's right, that's right. So half of the identified students, that's correct.
And I've asked, I wanted to bring this back up because it kind of begs, how do you, how do you correct the over-identify?
Yep.
Well, and this is what he's mentioned several times, RTI and MTSS. And I know those are just random letters to most of you, but that's truly, all of those letters are, it's a problem-solving process, and it follows a tiered approach, where we strengthen what we do for all students, and then we target specific needs. And most of the time, that'll correct some of the deficits that students are experiencing or that may exhibit academically or behaviorally. And for those that it doesn't, then we have intensive supports that would include Exceptional Children Services or Mental Health Services or Behavioral Liaison Support for PRC twenty-nine.
I think it's a great program, and they definitely need to move the assistance.
Yeah, this four twenty doesn't count AIG students, right?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Doug. Ms. Parker, Ms. Arrington. Okay, next item, consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So move.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, nobody signed up for the public comment session? Okay, nobody signed up for the public comment session, so we'll skip down to information items. Our next work session will be November fifth, two thousand fifteen, four o'clock, right here at the Professional Learning Center on the JP Knapp Early College Campus. Next Board of Education meeting will be November fifth at six-thirty over at the historic courthouse. And now for board member comments, we'll start with Ms. Etheridge.
Um, again, I'd like to welcome Mark Stefanik. We're happy to have you and, um, looking forward to working with you. Sydney and Jacob, it's a pleasure to be working with you all as well. Um, I had the opportunity to go to one of the football games. Gosh, what a great turnout to support the Knights. And I was really, um, happy to see our student cheering section. Uh, I thought it was great to see such, uh, team spirit and I really enjoyed that. So I urge everyone to, to go out to a game and support the Knights. Thank you.
Great, Mr. Simmons?
Uh, same thing, Mark. Glad to see you back. Uh, look forward to working with you. Uh, same thing, I've had a chance to go to a couple of football games and, like I said, big crowds to come see our kids. And that's about it.
Okay, Ms. Craft?
I also want to echo the sentiments of the rest of them to you, Mark, and Sydney and Jacob, a welcome life. Had the opportunity this month to visit all of our schools. I've been there, I've asked what's going on. And also went to the Community Rachel's Challenge Event at Moyette Middle School and the Rachel's Challenge Assembly at JP Knapp. And that's a wonderful program. I'm really excited about it. I'm hoping that we're going to see positive side of that. Thank you.
Great, Ms. Gaddis?
I, um, want to welcome everybody to, um, join our team. Um, on top of that, I attended our, um, Kirtuck County Educational Ministries meeting again this month. We have had some new churches joined, so that's exciting. And this month, we actually also invited or had, um, communications with our Fellowship of Christian Athletes Group, came out and met with our church leaders who are on the team, working to kind of partner those churches with our schools. Um, it's a group that is growing. It's making changes. We're making big steps. I'm excited for it. Um, and it's going well. We're still looking for other churches and we welcome any and everybody in the county that wants to get involved. Um, the next meeting is the same day as the school meeting, November fifth, but at nine AM. Um, and it's at the Extension Center, Grand Central Extension Center. Um, so anybody that wants to come, please come out and join us. Um, other than that, the only other thing I wanted to throw out there and it ties into schools in my opinion because it's, um, part of our public safety, Notts Island Volunteer Fire Department is in desperate need of volunteer firefighters. So if anybody in the community wants to join the volunteer firefighting team over Notts Island, come on over and join us because they need all the help they can get. And, um, that's about it. Thank you. Stay safe tomorrow.
I'd like to echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. Plus, I'd like to mention that we're here at the Professional Learning Center having our school board meeting because emergency management was monitoring or still is monitoring the path of the hurricane over at the courthouse. So, you know, that's why we're here. And with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Simmons? Wait, wait, wait. Mark wants to talk.
I was trying to throw one thing.
Okay.
Just informing the board that, uh, October, and this being the second day, uh, has been designated as National Principals Month. Um, and, and principal associations have set aside the month to recognize the significant role that principals and assistant principals play in the educational process. And so I'd like to thank the principals, uh, in the Kirtuck County School District and the assistant principals for a daily, on a daily basis. And, uh, look forward to working with all of them. Give them a round of applause to show our appreciation.
Did somebody already make a motion?
I think so. I think I did.
Oh.
I did. I moved.
Okay, have a motion in a second. All in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.